... open session.
There'll be one.
And before we start with the pledge, we will not be taking a break tonight. So, an announcement that I usually make a little bit later, I'll make now, that if anyone's here for public comment, there are blue cards outside there and if you would like to make any remarks to the board during that portion, if you would fill one of those out and sneak it over to Sandra while we're here at the beginning part of the meeting, then we can have you speak to us during that part. And so, we'll get started with the pledge.
..................................................................
Brings us to 2.02, approval of agenda.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. Really, the teachers just need a whole lot of praise for the work that they've done behind this on Dr. Westfall and her team to help support them with the instructional coaches. Couldn't do this without their leadership. So, they've done a phenomenal job. It's incredible. Present that to you for your consideration. Motion?
I move the board adopt the District 812 International Languages Curriculum.
Second motion.
Any comments or discussion before we take a vote? I think none. Roll call please.
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
New business? First up is the Northland CAPS presentation.
Yes, so we have several folks here representing Northland CAPS this evening. We're going to welcome to the podium. We've done this the last couple of years, asking them to come and share kind of what they're working toward. It's always a pleasure to have students tell their stories and experiences with Northland CAPS. So, we'll turn it over to Ms. Sandy Hinshaw.
Thank you. Appreciate you having us here this evening. As Dr. Tucker said, my name's Sandy Hinshaw. I'm the Executive Director for Northland CAPS. And we have several people here with us tonight, and I'll call them up here in just a minute. But, on your, in your area, I gave you a little folder with some information and some swag, some Northland CAPS swag there, the little packet with the notepads and stuff. So, I wanted to make sure that you guys saw that. But, just kind of a brief overview of Northland CAPS. We're a profession-based learning program, an experiential learning program where we work with juniors and seniors across the Northland Liberty School District being one of them. And, part of what we work on is providing them opportunity to explore a career prior to moving into that career, either after college, or if they decide to go right into the workforce. And so, what you see up on the screen is really just kind of our core values as a CAPS program. Profession-based learning, professional skills development, self-discovery and exploration, that entrepreneurial mindset, and then the responsiveness that we have to the businesses that are in the community as well, and providing them that seamless pipeline, hopefully, for students that want to explore that career option and then eventually go into that and stay local. So, we are one of 39 CAPS programs across the United States, 84 different school districts in 12 different states, and exciting to say we are the second-largest community in the United States. We are going to next year have approximately 30 new centers. This year, so we're standing and growing quite a bit.
When you say "CAPS," are you talking about a common curriculum, a common structure, and they're all called CAPS somehow?
Correct. Somehow, in some capacity. So, there's Northland CAPS, and just recently, there has been a Southland CAPS, CAPS standing for Center for Advanced Professional Studies.
Right. I remember when we put this together, but we kind of based it on the Blue Valley Program. I guess what I didn't realize is there was a national organization that chartered CAPS programs?
Yep. So, we have a CAPS network now currently where we convene every summer with the directors, and we all come together and kind of make sure that we have that fidelity across all programs. But, the neat thing about CAPS programs is that they acclimate to the community that they work in. So, what Blue Valley does and the programs that they have are not what we have necessarily because that may not be the industry that we have here in our area. And what Southland CAPS does, that may be very different. What St. Louis CAPS does, that could be different. Springfield could be different. But, they have all those same core values where they're working on those professional skills that our industry partners are telling us are necessary for employees to have, to be employable, once they get out into that workforce, or just the specific skills necessary for an individual business or industry.
Do you value rolling into Southland, or are they going to stay separate?
They're completely separate.
Both.
Two separate programs. So, Blue Valley is Kansas, Southland CAPS is Missouri, and they're just south of the river. So, they encompass Raytown, Lee's Summit, Grandview.
Thank you.
So, we focus then, so to your point, how we're different, is we focus on these areas and what we deem important in that these are areas that students, if they went away to college, they would be able to find a job or a position within these areas in the industry here in the Northland. So, that includes digital media and design, engineering and advanced manufacturing, global business and entrepreneurship, global logistics, medicine and healthcare, and technology solutions. Our senior associates, which we consider a strand because we have enough students participate in that, is for returning seniors that want to do it for a second year. So, we afford them that opportunity to come back, their senior they did as juniors. So, I'm going to call up a couple of our students from Liberty School District to talk to you a little bit about their experiences and introduce themselves.
Hi. My name's Michaela Brooks. I'm going to be a senior at Liberty High School, and I'm in the Medicine and Healthcare strand, and I'm going to be doing seniors.
Hello. I'm Tristan Henneberg. I'm a senior up at Liberty North High School, and I'm also in the Medicine and Healthcare for Northland CAPS. And I spent last spring interning with orthodontists.
There was a lot of experiences that I couldn't have, like in a traditional classroom, which is I'm very grateful for. We did a big project in each of our strands. My project was going to Manor Hill Elementary School and giving them like a presentation on healthy bodies, healthy mind. We did a lot of research to back that up. We talked to every grade level, and we did different activities on what they can do during their school day or at home, and how to incorporate that into their day.
So, the main thing that I got out of CAPS was that, to find my, like, interest. So, I went into CAPS thinking that I wanted to do radiology. Radiology was amazing. But, good thing that I went into CAPS because I actually found my interest wasn't there. It was actually in dentist, in dental. And I'm glad that that happened because, you know, I didn't waste time in school figuring out, hey, you know, this probably isn't my thing. And then, another thing that I found out in CAPS was that I actually obtained skills. That was the big thing. Finding my interest and gaining skills.
Yeah, I back off that. I didn't know what I wanted to do when I came into CAPS. I knew I wanted to do something in healthcare, but as we had professionals come and talk to us, interning with nurses and physicians and stuff like that, I learned that I wanted to go into geriatric nursing, which is really specific, but throughout the year, I just was like, oh, okay, that's interesting. I made apologies, improved my internship and stuff. I did geriatrics.
Oh, I've actually brought a few models. One, I did not make. I'm not going to, I just stole one. I did actually make this model, and you can feel free to pass it around and have a look. And throughout my internship, you know, you had to take a lot of initiative to be able to learn. And that was one of them. So, I was back in the lab one day, you know, just looking through the office, trying to see, oh, what can I learn? What can I do? And I actually talked to one of the assistants back in the lab. She was an orthodontic at Lab Tech, and she's in charge of making those models. And I asked, hey, what does it take to make one of those? And she says, well, lots of practice. And so, I kind of shouted her during that time and actually got to make one, and that's cool. And that actually takes about three days to make, which is actually something I thought was crazy. But, yeah. And I can also pass this around too. This is a model with just braces on it.
Where were you all assigned?
Do you know who Dr. Ed Kavanaugh is off of 152 and Northwood Trafficway? Yeah, I spent my internship there.
My internship was at the Ben House of Children's. I worked with the neurosurgeon, the family manager.
What do you envision? You're both going to be seniors next year, is that correct? What do you expect for Northland CAPS to do for you this coming school year?
This coming school year, as a senior associate, you do an internship for the entire year and not just half a semester or a semester. I believe this will gain, help me gain more knowledge on what I want to do, being more independent, not sitting in a classroom as often. We weren't really sitting in a classroom that often, but we did work with a group of people. This time, we're kind of more independent for the entire year and not just.
And it mainly helps with getting that foot into school. Like, you've already gotten some insight on this, and it's going to help you in the future.
Thank you.
So, they're pretty neat kids, huh? Right? Had some really neat experiences. One of the things that they're probably aren't aware of though, as a senior associate, one of the things that we're doing this year for returning students is providing them with some leadership training so that they can be the spokesperson for our program in a variety of different settings. And so, we're working with William Jewel College here in Liberty to provide them with that training. So, they're going to go through a week-long leadership training with them. So, we're really excited about adding that component to our program and to our senior associates moving forward. Thanks, Jason. So, one of the neat things about Northland CAPS is that our programs are embedded in the industries that they're learning about, and we're excited, especially with our Medicine and Healthcare group, to add an additional site next year. So, we will have our administrative offices at Ed Bank Liberty, and then our Medicine and Healthcare facilities at Kansas City Hospital, and then North Kansas City Professional Building, and students that attend those two will rotate between those two sites, having a hospital experience and then a clinical setting experience. At Liberty Hospital then, we have added St. Luke's Multi-Specialty Clinic, which is right off 152 over here. So, that clinical setting with Liberty Hospital and the students that attend that, those two sites will rotate between those two. So, we're really excited about how Medicine and Healthcare is evolving, and the opportunity that we're able to provide our students, adding an additional 50 spots for kids that haven't had that opportunity before. And then, our digital media and design is located in Gladstone at the Innovation Center on the Northwest Missouri State University floor at their campus. Technology Solutions is located at Serna Riverport. Global Business and Entrepreneurship for currently is located at the Innovation Center on Northwest floor, and that is only because their space is not ready yet. I Works from North Kansas City, if you're familiar with that facility, they're opening a new facility in Gladstone, and so they are going to give us a classroom there, having the opportunity to intermingle with a plethora of businesses that will be there. So, we're excited about that partnership. And then, our Engineering and Advanced Manufacturing is located at Magnet L&amp;B, which is here in Liberty, up at the North End. And then, Global Logistics is out at the Ambassador Building by the airport. So, with all of our programs, they all have dual credit associated with them, either through Northwest Missouri State or Maple Woods Community College this previous year, or through UMKC. And what we've done is we've aligned our curriculum to match the objectives of those courses, and so those courses then will hopefully lead to, if they just choose to go into a field within that area, give them that jumpstart on their career as a entry-level course that would allow them to advance within that course of study. So, for you guys, with the different dual credit, we had as a program, we had 445 hours of students that students took advantage of. Specifically for Liberty students, 122 of those hours went towards Liberty students advancing their college education through dual credit. So, obviously, we work with Liberty School District, but we also work with Carney, Excelsior Springs, Park Hill, Platte County, Smithville, and North Kansas City. And then, we're excited to say that we added an additional school district for next year with Lathrop School District, and if you're familiar with them, it's a small little school up north. Had a lot of interest, really excited about the partnership that we have with them. Northland CAPS, similar to what the school districts have, we are governed by a Board of Directors. Our current Board President is Tony Reinhardt from Ford Corporation, and then we have several superintendents, Dr. Tucker being one of them, and several other business partners that are a part of our program to help us make decisions and drive what we do and continue to do next. So, we continue to grow. First year, 28 students. You've heard this all before, I'm sure. Next year, we're looking at about 374. We were over 400 at the beginning of the year, but with the requirements to be a part of Medicine and Healthcare, some of our students just weren't able to do that, and so they've dropped off significantly right here before school starts, just not doing what they needed to provide those documentation to be in that particular strand. But, we're excited about that. We continue to grow, and hopefully, as we move forward, we'll continue to grow as well in adding additional students to the program. So, for Liberty then specifically, you guys started off with six students, and next year, we have 83 students signed up to be a part of the program. So, we continue to move. We had a little bit of a jump down this previous year, but it's jumped back up, and sometimes that's just interest or the class itself. It's pretty steady though, right around that enrollment range. And my numbers are off here, clearly, but in your packet, they're accurate. So, if you look at the first sheet that's there, it's this document here that just has the enrollment. So, you had mostly female be a part of our program last year with 72% and 28% male, and then obviously seniors being the most prevalent across the board for all of our students with 86 and 14% that were part of the program this past year.
Is that gender ratio, is that typical for other schools as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we're a half-day program, it's hard to do it two years in a row unless you're just really dedicated, like these two students that get their stuff all together and are able to get all their other credits in.
Specifically with female, male though, is that kind of the standard?
That rotates a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah. Sometimes we'll have more male overall, sometimes we'll have more female. Yours is very skewed, but it varies from year to year.
Okay.
But, that was going to be my question as well. Ethnicity percentages are about the same, Liberty versus entire program. Junior versus seniors is close, but it's about 50/50 in the program, male, female. Liberty's like 75, 78. Is that, I don't know, we have a tissue. Are we not selling this to the boys? I'm kind of looking for Colleen. Oh, there she is.
I know. I have to be honest with you, a lot of parents, I'm starting to graduate, we're forcing the children to pay, though they have really close conversations with their parents. But, it's, you know, crossfails over the end.
I knew at one time, we kind of had a problem, or not a problem, but a challenge selling internally and making sure people were even aware of the program and they could sure get out there. We've kind of taken off in the last couple of years. We've really taken off with the girls.
We've talked about our marketing strategy for not just Northland CAPS, but for all the different programs we have, and we're really excited that Colleen will get a facelift on her website and how that is marketed out. We're going to work with Dallas in getting that information out. So, we think that'll help as well, just the information out to parents and. To make this happen, obviously, we got to work with a lot of different business partners. First semester's our curriculum-based instruction where they're doing their projects, working with authentic businesses, doing things for businesses that they would use immediately. And then, second semester, they have the opportunity to go out to apply and then interview for an internship second semester. And so, these are just a few of the businesses that we work with, but we're always looking for additional business partners. So, if you ever know of any, send them our way. We're, we would welcome the opportunity to work with additional Liberty businesses and provide them the opportunities that some of our other schools have. But, this is just a map of this past spring as to where all of our students had their internships, and I like to always provide this only because it lets you see the magnitude of where we're at across the Northland and the opportunities that our students have all over the place. There are several outliers when you see that. So, you've got one that's way down in Overland Park, and then one way south of Raytown. Typically, those have been proctored by the student themselves. Maybe their parents work there, or a neighbor works there, and they've, you know, parents have said, yeah, no problem driving that far. But, we typically stay within Kansas City North for our internships most of the time in our internship communities. So, for Liberty students specifically, these were some of the places that they had their internships. The ones that are underlined are right here in the Liberty community, some of those that our students had the opportunity to be a part of. So, Northland CAPS continues to want to provide opportunities for students, give them additional things to think about, promote our programs and our districts. And one of the neat things that we did this year was had the opportunity to provide $20,000 scholarships to students that were participants in Northland CAPS. And I'm excited to say that nine of them were from Liberty School District, which is really exciting for the district and for the students that were able to receive those scholarships. So, we had, and they had to be seniors, so I'm hoping that our two seniors will be applying for that next year, and we'll be able to award those to them at our end of year celebration. So, another thing that we did this year too, which I'm very excited about and partnered with Colleen pretty extensively, we came out of a meeting and I said, hey, what do you think about this? Can we do this? She's like, we'll do it. Let's do it. And so, this year, we did a pilot program for Liberty Middle School students where they had the opportunity to experience what Northland CAPS is on a very abbreviated schedule, obviously. But, Christopher Hand and Colleen, they were fabulous to work with. They embraced what we do. They provided us with a lot of flexibility to make that work. And so, the director for that program that we had this summer is Jonathan Hart, who is our digital media and design instructor, and he's been working on some administrative tasks of his own to advance himself. And so, we gave him that opportunity to kind of lead this initiative here with you guys. So, I've asked him to come in and just talk a little bit about how that process went. So, Mr. Hart?
So, when Ms. Hinshaw, Ms. Jones, and Mr. Hand came to me to discuss this, we really wanted to see, basically, the question is, can the cognitive development of a seventh and eighth grader understand and learn the philosophies of Northland Caps? And so, what we wanted to do, there's some key phrases in terms of we wanted to really tap into. One of them was authenticity. And so, what we had the students do, or what we looked at were three different happenings that were going on in your community. We looked at the wing addition to Liberty North High School. We looked at the Performing Arts Center addition to Liberty High School and then the new animal shelter that's going in. Once we had those, we started to put a team together of faculty, which consists of Tim Anderson, Ryan Dom, and Summer Kelly, who are excellent. The successes that we had through this program were a direct reflection of their drive and their commitment and their passion to this kind of learning. The first step was with that faculty to teach them a different methodology where we were working on authentic, professional, problem-based learning, which is different than a traditional school setting. Started to introduce them to some of the Caps philosophies and some of the key things that we wanted to work on earlier on, talked about professional skills. So, they are communication, time management, problem-solving, creativity, integrity. Those are the five bases of how we were going to move forward and really direct the students to understand those. From there, we also looked at 30-second elevator speeches, how to greet people and then how to present what it is that they were working on at the end of the two-week session. So, what we did, we had the students, when they came in, we introduced them professional skills and then we had them pick two career paths. One, that they're passionate about, which consisted of professional football players and dancers, to a program provided by Liberty Schools that tests their personalities to see what careers more align. From there, we had them pick which career path that they wanted to look into. And so, we had them look at what kind of education was going to be needed, how much that education was going to cost, what additional training that may be, what kind of jobs, salaries are going to be available for them, and then what other jobs may be similar that they don't know about. So, they researched that piece. Once that happened, then they were our professionals in that field and they began to look at these different happenings and we divided them up and they began to look at these happenings. To do that, we went over to Liberty North High School and the animal shelter so the students could take tours and see what it is that they're going to be working on. People like Dr. Jacobs, Aaron Money, Bob Cornell from the district and then Shawna Thunderburke from the animal shelter gave tours. We also have Steve Anderson and his team come in and did a panel discussion in front of the students where they could ask questions. We talked to them about active listening and being prepared for as guest speakers come in and what kind of questions they need to ask. And then from there, what we had them do as the professional in understanding the scope of the project is we have them look through the different lenses of the different strands that Northland Caps provides. So, for instance, we had a student who wanted to be a shoe designer and he was working for the Performing Arts Center. So, what he did is looking through the medicine and healthcare lens, he wanted to develop new types of ballerina shoes because ballerina shoes are so tough on the dancer's feet. So, he wanted to come up with a new way of doing that. Looking through the engineering lens, he recycled materials to develop a softer shoe that wasn't going to be as loud as the stage crew moved equipment between sets on the Performing Arts Center. We had another student who wanted to be a taxidermist, so working with the animal shelter. She looked at, from the digital media design strand, creating images so her clients could see what poses for their animals could be in and then a separate room so as she worked on the pelts, it wouldn't upset the other animals. Then we had a cupcake maker who was looking at the wing of the Liberty North and she said that from a business lens, she wanted to use the new food or max area so students could cook food and then sell it to their peers. And then from medicine and healthcare, she wanted to educate people about different allergies when cooking for their peers. So, what we did at the end of the two weeks is they got on stage and presented to their family and friends, peers, members of the community, people from the district, what their career paths were, what their happening was and then how they could correct it for their professional lens. That was it. We did collect some data on the, we used some Likert scales on their understanding of these professional skills and saw a lot of positive growth on not only their understanding, but as we looked at them, their demonstration of what that was. So, overall, teamwork between Northland Caps administration, Liberty administration, it was quite successful. Out of the 84 other districts, I think we're the first ones that went down into the middle school level to see if these kind of skills are going to be transferable at that level and then develop them as they go through high school. Thank you. Oh, any questions?
We're very excited about that program and excited to do it again next year and provide some additional students the opportunity to have that engagement at a younger level. And then, one of the other things that we do with Northland Caps is we also provide a teacher academy in the summer and in your packet, there should be a sheet that is on the very back that lists how many each of the school districts came, excuse me, came to that and how many Liberty teachers were available for that program this year. Looks like we had two from Liberty School District that came. Very similar to what we do with the students, we provide them the opportunity to see what it is that we do. It's a three-day experience. We provide them with opportunity to go out and see various businesses and then the goal is, is that they'll implement some of those things in their classroom and provide them the opportunity then to present that out in February and showcase some of the stuff that they've done. So, when that comes about, we'll invite you to that. If you'd like to come, it's usually in Gladstone, Hugueney Center there. The other things that are in your packet are just some basic information about Northland Caps. The first one that's listed there is just how we've evolved with the strands over the years and the comparison between the different districts. And so, that's all listed there for you guys. And then just the demographics for the entire Northland Caps program, not just Liberty. And then, one of the things that we started doing this year was providing our board of educa, our board with the opportunity to see what it, specifically in a little handy-dandy form, which is this one, about what were some of the things specific that we did, some of our highlights. And so, I wanted to provide that to you as well, just because sometimes you get excited and think maybe you've already heard it, but provide you with the opportunity to kind of progress through that and see some of the neat things that we've done throughout the year. And then, just a hard copy of the internships and some business partners, where your kids were for their internships, our school calendar for next year, how that works. And then, our partnership that we currently have with Northland Career Center in Flat City and how we are a partnership versus a competition. And so, it's a document that just lists how we're different, but how we're the same, what we're doing, so that we can help all kids. Because not every kid wants to be in Northland Caps, not every kid wants to be in the career center, but provide them that opportunity to find the right place to be that's going to help them down the road. And then, just some basic internship topics. So, that's about it for us. We are open to questions if you guys have any questions for any of us.
What do you feel your biggest obstacles are to continuing to build the Northland Caps program?
Continued business partners. As we continue to get larger, finding placements for them for internships will become more difficult, specifically in the medicine and healthcare strand, as we have so many. So, that can be an obstacle. But then also, some of our businesses that we have a great partnership with are working right now with us, but next year, they may not have a project that we can do. So, we're constantly looking for business partners. Maybe they'll circle back around the next year. So, it's just, it's a continual process trying to stay relevant and current and providing those opportunities to the students is probably one of the biggest obstacles, just bandwidth. So, are you looking at next year's middle school program being the same length of time and the same number of kids? Are you looking at broadening it? What?
Well, I think it has to be the same time. It's about the best response numbers. I'm actually here to talk about, I think it's a successful, just point, point, numbers and we grow with other discussions about it, we grow with what the best, like, so many of the different...
And we're looking to expand it to other districts as well. Liberty being the pilot program, we've kind of took a few, okay, this worked, this didn't. We're hoping to find that out to other districts as well, to expand, for Northland Caps. For Liberty School District specifically, we're open to offering it to as many students as have interest, but that means then hiring more staff and, you know, the costs and how you want to go in that direction.
The other thing we promised Blue Valley Caps was that we would follow up with them after this initial pilot, so they're eager to hear how we do this. Blue Valley Caps.
So, there's been about five graduating classes that have moved on beyond high school. Any thing that you've heard from those students who've been through this and have moved forward and what influenced where they are now and thoughts of how to hold that back into change?
We've reached out to the three students that would have been this year, seniors in their program. Some of them have not graduated yet, some of them went right into the workforce. What we found, what we found out programmatically is that we did not do a good job that first year getting contact information that would be reliable in four or five years down the road. So, we were still reaching, trying to reach out to several of them. We've hit about half. And what we found is that, one, they feel that the professional skills and the critical thinking skills that they learned through the program helped them immensely in whichever area. Even if they didn't go into the field that they learned with us, it was transferable across any field that they went into. So, that was very powerful to hear that. They said that the internship piece was key because it provided them that authentic business experience in the industry that they were having interest in. So, that was very key as well. Those are some of the...
There's a little bit of feedback, we're starting.
Yes, we're getting there.
Can I add to that?
I'll start somewhere.
We also hosted in this room several months back, a panel conversation in which those graduates were brought back and had phenomenal things to say. Some that had gone on to college, but then as Sandy said, others that had entered the workforce directly. One of the students that stood out for me, I cannot remember his name and I apologize, but he had entered into the tech space. His comments were that he was doing things because of Northland Caps that some of his peers in the workplace didn't understand or could do. And so, we've heard that repeatedly from students that have gone through Northland Caps as well as other experiential learning programs we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. We are at KC Tech Academy.
So, we've given you some information as to the progress toward KC Tech Academy and wanted to just give you a couple of updates. Similar to Northland Caps in its infancy, kind of building it as we were flying it, we feel like we've been doing that with the Kansas City Tech Academy. For those of you that are not familiar with this concept, we've been partnering with Magna LNV just down the road in our industrial park on this concept of taking students out of their traditional classroom setting and putting them in the workplace. Again, in a similar vein as Northland Caps for the purpose of providing them experiential learning opportunities. You have a flyer that is provided at your desktop this evening with a little bit of an overview as we try to develop some marketing materials that also highlights some open house meetings, you know, on August 2nd as well as August 8th to try to kind of crystallize what this program will entail. It's a partnership between Liberty Public Schools, Carney School District, Magna LNV as well as MCC. And the intent is to provide experiential learning opportunities onsite in the robotics and systems control space, part of which is facilitated through Magna. But, at the same time that students are garnering those experiences, embedding dual credit through pursuit toward an associate's degree. And that can involve a couple of things. At the associate's degree level, there's a Level 1 certificate, which is about 20 credits, a Level 2 certificate, which is an additional 20 credits. And then eventually, if the student continues to pursue that associate's degree path culminating in a total of 60 credits, they could complete, as we build this program over the next several years, they could complete an associate's degree. So, we've been feverishly working on this since May and I think every administrator in this room has had their hand in this at some point along the way. One of the things that is pending is a memorandum of understanding that will bring the Board of Education for approval. Our intent though now, this week and next, is to really market the program to our two districts, so Carney as well as Liberty, the two high schools, and Liberty and Carney High School, in order to fill about a dozen to 14 seats. So, that is our intent. From a curriculum standpoint, we've probably had more meetings around the curricula piece and the programming piece as we coordinate with higher education and also as we coordinate with industry in and around building experience, but then also acquiring certifications tied to the workplace. So, again, we look forward to continuing to provide updates to the board. We're really down to the wire now in trying to identify those students that we believe have a propensity as well as an interest within this space and seeing if this is something that they want to engage on and embark on in this next year. The goal being, if you've not, if you're not familiar with Ramtech out of Ohio, Ramtech is a similar structure that they came across, we came across with the help of the Kaufman Foundation, Magna and others that exists across the state of Ohio. Thought being similar to what we experienced with Northland Caps, start small, but then look across the Kansas City metropolitan area to see if this is something that other industries, other partners, corporations are interested in doing across the area. So, envision it kind of being birthed out of this region in our industrial park, but then satellite locations in areas like southeast or over in, you know, kind of the northwest area of Kansas City, Lower in Kansas and kind of the northwest portion over and around Shawnee Mission and so forth. So, we're continuing to move this forward. We'll continue to provide updates, hope being that we're able to put students in these seats and begin the work toward credentialing, associate's degree credit, but then also ensuring that they are still on that path towards high school graduation. So, that's our update. You're certainly welcome to attend any of the open house events. You probably have more questions than I have answers, quite honestly, because we're again building it as we fly. But, would certainly entertain any questions that you might have.
What's the timeline?
Timeline would be the start of August, the first day of school.
Like two weeks?
Our timeline in terms of beating the bushes and honing in on those students is now to ensure that we're able to fill those seats. One of the things that we do, and I think it was mentioned earlier with our middle school Caps program, is interest inventories, a program called Naviance if you're not familiar with that. But, we have a list of several pages deep, Ms. Jones, of students that have expressed interest in pursuing something within the robotics and systems control field. It's a little bit different than manufacturing like we would typically think about it. It's clean, advanced manufacturing, highly technical. The other piece that we've thought about in the future is that this could also lead toward jobs for students that do well within this space or that do well within these internship experiences with Magna and other companies. So, there are multiple stepping stones towards students that are looking for students.
Are there other, I think, what other programs exist for our students where they can acquire a certification?
And there's some specific automotive industry certifications tied to this that have a lot of different acronyms. So, when we're in the room with the Magna folks, they can rattle them off. I apologize, I don't have those. Where we see the attainment of credentialing or certifications, I don't know if any of our strands at Northland Caps have any of those certifications tied to terms of industry experience, but then we also see them at career centers. We could certainly try to compile that and then share it with the board. That's when you're able to walk out, having had that learning opportunity, some type of apprenticeship or prudential experience. Colleen or Dr. Moore, if either of you have anything else to add to that.
This is limited seats within this program, right? It's not anybody advised?
At the present, yes. It's limited at the present. We're working on some funding opportunities through grants. So, then moving forward as we think about this growing similar to Northland Caps and as you look at other districts perhaps participating, other companies participating, it will likely be a blended funding stream where there's a commitment on the part of the district, but then hopefully there's some partnership opportunities with foundations as well as our corporate partners to be able to sustain this. So, that's something that we're constructing as well.
So, that's 14 seats for Liberty and Carney students?
Really keep in mind the three high schools, Liberty North, Liberty High School as well as Carney.
Okay.
You have a pretty good base to draw on. There's a little bit of a willingness to step out, experience this and then to be constructed for the first time, similar to what we did with Northland Caps. Year two, it's a little bit easier sell, so as you see where we're at today. But, I want to draw us back to, to our conversation we've been having over the last several years about whether we call it the golden cloud or when we talked about off-site experiences. The Northland Caps is a phenomenal example, but that accounts for about 80 to 83 students within our district. Whereas when we were having those conversations, we talked about about 450 presently have some type of out-of-classroom experience that takes them out into the workplace. As we've discussed as a board, our goal is to grow that. So, I would dare say, jump out there and say, "Okay, what would it look like if in Liberty Public Schools, every single high school graduate walked away with some type of experiential learning opportunity in conjunction with either A or multiple workplaces?" I think that's our lofty goal. I think that's what we try to strive to do. So, gradually, we'll get there with all of their help that's across from us, but then also all of our partners within our community will need that happening. Other questions?
Is it an application process?
At the present time, there is an application involved primarily due to the MCC portion initially.
Okay.
So, right now, if you're interested in, say, in good standing, so to speak, academically as well as behaviorally, because you're going to be in the workplace, those are those students that we're really seeking out. And so, as we kind of firm that up, there would likely be some criteria put in place in a certain string. The MCC piece is just pretty standard in terms of meeting and fulfilling their requirements. The other juggling act here, if you're not familiar with higher education and dual credit articulation, is we have the ability, given that we're offering some of our dual credit courses, to embed high school credit. So, in essence, you're able to take that dual credit course, but at the same time fulfill the high school graduation. So, if you're taking, say, college algebra, use that as an example, then that can double up and count toward perhaps the high school gradu, the high school graduation, in terms of, we're working through those processes, specific sort of processes. Other questions? We're excited about it. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. Again, express appreciation to everybody in this building in terms of illustrative development. More to come.
Last item, new businesses, contracts, purchases?
We have three items under contracts and purchases, the first of which is a data sharing agreement presented to you for first reading. This is run through our Liberty Public Schools research process. Mr. Han kind of works with this in terms of approving research and ensuring that it's all up to speed. In this instance, Bob Citro has worked very closely with it. To give you some background, the city of Kansas City and surrounding areas have been working on the issue of student mobility, as well as as it relates to evictions. So whether it's segments that perhaps you've seen on Kansas City public television or within the news, there are a variety of conversations taking place around the metropolitan area on this area. And so what we'd like to be able to do is present for your approval, participation, providing some data as it relates to our district. So you have an agreement there regarding the sharing of that information in an effort to try to provide solutions and remedies to the student mobility and evictions issue in our area. We'll present that to you for your consideration. The second piece is with panorama education. We have been working over the course of the last several months on RFP related to social emotional learning. To give you a little bit of background, we started these conversations with the Gallup Student Program, trying to survey students on topics like hope, engagement, career, financial leadership, different things like that, and really feel the need to take that to a step further. So that proposal is presented to you this evening, and it comes with a fiscal note of $31,000. And then, anything else to add to that, Dr. Heide or Academic Services team? And then the third item that's presented under contracts and purchases is for kind of an emergency maintenance purchase per board policy DJF-1 as it relates to Stinger Industries and repair of some roofing issues that we were dealing with at Discovery Middle School on an amount of $1,300. That work has been done, so now we're just bringing that to you. Anything to add on that piece? That would be it for night one. Any questions?
With regard to the sharing agreement, I mean, obviously, this is legally required for us. I worry about, when I say we're sharing data outside the district, about district families, is it metadata or is it individual data?
So nothing, it's shared via MOSAID. So student gets an aggregate from that standpoint, you can disaggregate it to an extent, but at the same time, every student has a MOSAID. That's the information that you share. We do that periodically with higher ed institutions, with individuals that can conduct in graduate research. So we have some policies in place. And so again, this piece has been connected to our school district's attorney, Capes as well.
And it's in, we're trying to cooperate with overall.
And again, it's a multi-district around the metropolitan area collaborative initiative.
So you're requesting action on all three of these items?
I move the board approve the data sharing agreement, panorama education agreement, and the payment made to Stinger Industries.
I second that.
Further discussion or questions? Go for it, please.
Jake?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
Who's new business, offices to reports from administration? First up is Academic Services.
Alan, Jennifer Bacon, Jessica Cervantes, Laura Pixler, Megan Oswaski, Nicole Hicks, Stacy Daniels, Jamie Ackert, Jennifer Seelak, Sarah Wickham, Becky Gossett, Andrea Dixon-Sehorn, Julie Moore, Jessica Meisenheimer, and Jeanette Westfall, especially for their work on that team. We would like to show you a quick video, part of what this, we have two hours that we have to train our staff. It's mandated by the state. And so the team got together and thought, you know, how do we engage our staff in what that training looks like? Because it can be just wah-wah-wah, you know, or it can be something that really tugs at the heart and mind of why we do what we do each day. So I'm going to just show you three minutes of the first part of what that training is. Jeff Knoll, I don't know if he's still here, he was here earlier, just has done a phenomenal job of putting this together. So we're going to play three minutes of it.
That just because I have dyslexia doesn't mean that I'm not smart.
Okay.
It is very important that we get these children help. These children help.
Say that 70% of all juvenile delinquents have dyslexia.
I wish my friends knew that we were just as smart as them.
Hi, my name's Brody, and I have dyslexia.
I'm Erin, and I'm a dyslexic.
Hi, my name's Hannah, and I have dyslexia.
There's that ability to approach a problem in different ways because the way that they're taught is not the way that they're learned, is something that's valuable to watch and very motivating practice to bring to when I learn new things and certainly when I work with my patients in my department practice office.
Dyslexic students represent some of our best and brightest minds. But in our educational system, we have not found a way to lift almost 20% of our student body, to help them find their inherent intellectual capacity.
Right, we've all heard how Einstein is dyslexic, right? JFK, Pablo Picasso, Leonardo da Vinci, Richard Branson, Charles Schwab, I mean, the laundry list is endless, right? In fact, dyslexics, when they are fully empowered and they recognize that innate intelligence, represent 35% of all entrepreneurs. They represent 40% of all self-made millionaires. And you know those rocket scientists down at NASA? One out of two of them is dyslexic. My favorite, my favorite, because I live in Cambridge, Massachusetts, is this, you know, easy-to-get-in-to school called MIT. They call dyslexia the MIT disease.
The state has mandated through recent legislation that we will spend two hours of our professional development time on understanding dyslexia. We want you to spend the next hour with us, understanding what is dyslexia, what it's like to be dyslexic and the child struggle, what it means to your classroom, and finally, what tools are available at LPS to help you enrich our students' educational process.
Dyslexic.
So anyway, we're pretty proud of what's happening, and I'm sure we'll have some changes and updates with it. If I can answer any questions for you, I'd be happy to.
Questions for Dr. Han?
I thought reading backwards was a skill.
Thanks for the work on it.
Oh, it's the team. Yeah.
Darren, any questions? Then next up is finance, Ms. Sullivan?
Good evening. Just a couple of things to add to my report tonight. I wanted to let you know that we did close on the purchase of the support services and the end documents were finally wired. VA has seen that we can go tonight. Full to have a full room. I showed you buckets and... August they will... September, they will also be meeting with the... They would like to look at... Auditors will initially be here August 22nd and 23rd. That work done too. Or if you have any questions.
Questions for Cindy? Figuring out for setting the tax rate come August, that's on the horizon. Thank you, Cindy. Next up, then, under 10.03, under Human Resources, Dr. Volokh. Questions for Dr. Volokh? Operations, Mr. Han?
Just a few items to draw out or to supplement the report that's included. First, all the departments within operations are kind of in high gear, preparing for the start of school. That includes kind of preparing all the buildings and sites on campus, across campuses. Also, finalizing, fine-tuning transportation routes, hiring staff. I included as a supplemental report kind of some highlights of the various projects that are currently underway, both those that are within the bond and then some of the capital projects that we're working on. Also, we'll be gearing up again for active shooter training, and that applies across the system to all staff, employees. If any of you are interested in kind of learning about that or seeing what that looks like, just feel free to contact Adam, myself, or Gary Majors and kind of share with you what that schedule is. You're all welcome to stop in and attend one of those if you're interested. This week, we are going to be interviewing for our property and casualty brokers, so that, I think you're aware, that RFP is up and we're looking at, taking a look at that at the moment, with the goal of having that in front of you for consideration next month. And that would kind of take us into the following year to get ready as we look to update all of those providers that are currently within our system. Last thing I wanted to draw attention to, it's really the last part of the operations report, and it's one of the last paragraphs, and that's just transportation. I think for those who've been around for a little while are aware that we've really struggled with staffing for some time. It's been a tremendous challenge, and really in hiring Jeff Baird, he really made it a high priority this year, or last year at this time. We're about 24, 25 short. We are, as it stands right now, fully staffed. My understanding is we have not been fully staffed in transportation for 10 years. And so we're really excited to kind of finally hit that threshold and be fully staffed, so it's going to be interesting to see what that feels like. So with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
You don't know what changed from a staffing front? You don't know what changed, or what?
There are a couple of things that changed. If you remember, maybe about two or three years ago, we did make some changes, increased the salary. We also recognized them for more of the experience that they brought onboard. I think the biggest change recently is there's been a really aggressive push in terms of how to get the word out that we're hiring.
Okay.
Jeff has really leveraged Facebook and social media to...
I remember the hourly change was, like you said, two or three years ago, we were still having a staffing problem last year. So I was just trying to figure out in the last 12 months.
I think he's, in fact, Jeff has done, and his team, they've done a nice job of using Facebook and social media, and in fact, to the point that some of the other operations departments are kind of tapping him on the shoulder to see how he's really using that effectively, and it's been transformational for him.
It looks like the only real issue we've got is nutrition services from a staffing standpoint.
Yeah, in fact, that's the one that he's currently working closely with, most closely with, yeah. The competition's a little bit different there, too, because there's so much out there. They're looking at using Facebook and other social media channels.
Are the concession buildings at the athletic complexes gone?
Concession buildings are complete and being occupied as we speak. I think they're just finishing up this week, getting... just finishing up this week getting their health department permits to use the concession stand, so the restrooms are open, have been approved by the city. The last piece is the donor wall in the donor plaza. The donor wall will be done here within the next two weeks, if not sooner. The donor plaza with the paver system is a little bit kind of backlogged in trying to coordinate that, so that will probably be later into the fall before that's complete. And once that's complete, then those facilities...
Other questions for operations? Under the superintendent's report, a couple of items you'll notice in my introduction to that report, trying to incorporate the goals identified by the board earlier this spring as well as at our study session. So we'll continue to bring those items in front of the board as well as solicit your feedback to ensure that we're on target as it relates to the items we need to be identifying and also as we look to develop metrics associated with those areas, knowing that a couple of things may occur. We may be able to identify some quantitative pieces, qualitative pieces, or perhaps a metric is the absence of a process or system or structure and the creation of one. So that's how I've thought through the metrics piece today. One of the things we'll be doing at our September study session as we reconvene our study sessions is to begin getting your feedback, having conversed with cabinet, our strategic leadership team, but then also once again bring it to the Board of Education, dive into the school year and the system, identifying some of the metrics tied to the goals we've identified. Several of us just got back today, yesterday, from the DESI conference, which was a successful conference, actually one of the better ones that we've attended with a variety of sessions presented on a variety of topics. One of the things that we're starting to see, as DESI has kind of labeled this year kind of a show-me success year, is they're beginning to enter into the conversation around innovation and personalization. So bringing speakers in like Tom Murray, Luke Murray, if you're familiar with him, from Future Ready, we've done some work with him over the last several years, working for Future Ready schools, Future Ready libraries. So it was good to be able to sit and listen to those types of conversations happening at the state level. In addition to him, another keynote was from the author of Grit, Paul Tough, if you're familiar with How Students Succeed, and kind of the work that's been done around grit and other attributes. So it was good to be able to listen to him. So on one hand, the innovations piece, the thinking differently about education, student-centered, but then on the other side, as we talked earlier about social emotional learning, some of those skills that are needed for success in life, it's good to see those conversations that are needed to take shape at the DESI level. In that vein of social emotional learning, I did include an article that was featured in the Digital Promise League of Innovative Schools spotlighting Liberty Public Schools and the work that we've done around trauma. So if you've not seen that, take a look at that and thank you to all of our team for the efforts in that space. The other piece I wanted to mention was earlier this summer, Liberty Public Schools hosted Conscious Discipline Workshop. So I thought those were two good examples of kind of what we're doing to ensure that students are supported both as a system, but then also be able to have an impact, a greater impact on school districts across our state and across our country. The next item, you've been provided two documents tied to the Kansas City discussion around a pre-K sales tax, specifically the mayor's office, and putting some thoughts to that as they approach the deadline, which is August 24th, as to whether or not to file an item for the November ballot. As you know, we're part of the cooperating school districts. Within their legislative platform, there are some issues that have arisen as a result of legislative platform, but then potentially with the pre-K sales tax. So take a look at that. There's also a series of questions that have been posed from school districts. So still engaging in that conversation, I do want to provide you a little bit of a timeline. So the date for submission as it relates to placing an item on the November ballot is August 24th. Throughout the course of the last several weeks, the city of Kansas City has been in the process of soliciting signatures via petition to be able to put something on the ballot. And so a couple of things, assuming they have enough signatures, then the item then is placed before the city council to be submitted on August 24th. The city council has a couple of options. They can submit the ballot language as is for it to appear on the November ballot, or they can hold for a period of 90 days, take time to perhaps further study, gather additional information, whatever the case may be. At the conclusion of those 90 days, so day 91 for example, if the city council has not yet submitted that information for the ballot, then it is laid over, would not appear on the November ballot, but then it would appear on the spring/A April ballot. And so there's a high likelihood of this item being placed on the ballot at some point, whether it's November or April. We're still in conversation with the city of Kansas City as well as cooperating school district on the detail. I think conceptually, everyone agrees that the more exposure and opportunity for a child that experiences it better in ensuring that students are kindergarten ready. It's the means in which we get there that's really being the discussion right now. So we'll continue to stay close to it and give you updates as we progress throughout that, the coming weeks and fall. The last item I wanted to mention, we've talked a couple of times over the years in terms of growing our sphere of influence, in terms of the impact that we have, not only within our district, but as well across the state and across the nation. So we've talked about being able to present and tell our story in a variety of settings. So we're looking forward to the Missouri School Boards Association Conference in September and being part of three sessions, the first of which is a panel conversation around what we do in Liberty Public Schools, which is related to the Outstanding Boards of Education Award that we received earlier in June. A couple of you have identified your willingness to help with that panel, so I appreciate that. In addition, we'll be telling our story as it relates to our Building Pride campaign, our approach to fundraising and partnering, both public and private, toward the construction of our two activity complexes. And the third session we'll be hosting is Choice and Innovation in Public Schools and how we approach innovation, expanding choice and a variety of options for our students and parents. In addition to MSBA, we were approved for a conference session on Leading Through Choice, which is a partnership with Liberty, Melville, and Springfield, and we'll be doing that in the spring semester at the National Superintendent's Association Conference. And then in September, another one is the State Education Agency Directors of Arts Education. We were invited, myself, Erin, money, as well as a couple of our teachers from Epic Elementary, to serve on a panel with the Commissioner of Education. So we're looking forward to doing that right here in Kansas City, so we don't have too far to go. And then we're still waiting to hear a little bit from hopefully some good news from the National School Boards Association as far as some topics that we presented to you. So we have a lot going on and we'll lean on you all to assist in telling our stories and not just within our district and our community, but be able to tell that on a much broader scale as well. Those are my items. Unless there are questions that we're going to have. All right, thank you. Upcoming meetings, we've got one more month without the study session. The only meeting I'm on for the board is August 21st and of course we have our community partners meeting then at Juul on 22nd. And I think that brings us to board remarks.
I had the opportunity to go to the legislative forum that LaFey put on, is it a week ago? Two weeks ago? There were some very interesting legislators or legislator, people who are running for various offices at the national and state level. The questions were geared towards prevention, but if the opportunity presents itself in the future, it is well worth it to go and listen to the answers that these people provide. So there was quite a, there were 22 different legislators there. So we got everything from Mr. Steinman, who apparently has run for office eight, nine, or 10 times, to brand spanking new. This is the first time I've run for an office.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Is there more words in there?
Roll call please.
Jake?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.